If you want to stand out here, you can. You can set it up.
What, what, what happened? What happened with you, man? Let me get you like this. What happened with you? What's up with you?
To allow me to have my...
I think he should... Maybe you didn't know... That, that, it's all fake. Look at your footage, it's all fake. Were the body cams on?
I don't know, but there were reporters there and so it's been on television.
Yeah, that...
But in any event, that's not the point.
Do you know about the RICO statute? You do one thing, federal crime, and you're getting for conspiracy for whatever these guys do. What?
The mayor under the First Amendment of the Constitution, which is not only freedom of speech, but freedom to display...
Absolutely.
And protest.
Again, let me follow up with this, this rule that they're saying.
That's over there.
That's perfect.
So who are you? I think you pretended, I think the mayor knew, you all had it all planned out. And I think you're with all the guys. And I've been watching this stuff a long time. And that's why, so I'm not mad at you, I'm just, no, you're, you're, you're... Actually, I like you, I need to film you.
One more thing, um, that you have opened for before, I need to say it one more time. In 1976, Seattle, New York, was a meeting. It was somehow to do with parks. Your plan for JCParks is better suited for what are being in parks, not the destruction of our neighborhood park. Resolution 288-23. Thank you.
That guy.
Good job.
We got him, bro.
Alright. One more round of BS, oh, I'm sorry. I mean, I contain space, I can see it. This is so frustrating. We come here time after time.
Wilson is a former boxer and he's accused of being that, like, grabbed thing, so it would have been grabbed, plop! Right? And then, you know, and that's like, and that cop wasn't... You know, and he tried a little bit first, they say, and the cop didn't shoot him, and then like, and that cop should be famous, you know?
Yeah, and we understand that, you know, your client got it through tax, even from the bank and everything, so there's only sort of things that don't be wrong, so kind of, you know, take care of whatever.
Well, thank you.
Alright, excellent.
Will you do whatever you can to get him called?
Okay, sounds good. Good talking, thanks.
Did they cancel? They canceled the press conference, right? They cancel it? Did they, like, cancel the press conference? I think they did, because I'm here. I'm gonna go down the stairs, I won't be in the elevator with you.
How old are you? Research everything? They have a lot of different things to say.
Yeah, yeah.
It was like seven, I think six, seven or eight voters in it. I know you go to the State Department. Hello, are you with us at JC2 or what?
I have a YouTube channel, so I'm on this and... See, I got this theory that, um, that arrest, that wasn't, that was fake. Like, like he set it up with, um, and that's what I'm thinking. And so I've been asking about that, and you guys can humor me if I'm just wrong, I'm crazy, right? Wait.
I, to be perfectly honest with you...
Door's open, I'm gonna make an appointment, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring it up.
You have nice night.
Scott, the same touch, okay? For maybe not just for that, but for other things.
So what, what's up with that? You know, like I said, I think it's fake, isn't that funny though?
He felt that, you know, a lot of us weren't even aware that he were here and he felt that we should have made a stand for him.
But, but like my theory that it's like fake, like he's, he's like lying and the mayor is in on it, like, and they set this up. Like that whole, like, him getting escorted out by the police is like fake. The mayor's in on it, the guy, the dude is in on it. You see him flapping around and stuff like how it is.
I really don't know that, you know, all I know is that I was here, I didn't even know him at that time and I, I kind of witnessed it, but, um...
That's a strange reaction, dude, you guys...
You know, a lot of us don't even know each other, we're just meeting here for the first time.
Wow, yeah, you got that.
So this is why we called, we're having a meeting on, on Sunday at 9:00 AM. If you want to come and, you know, join us, you'll bring along...
Dude, I was up in Boston watching Secret Service, dude, it was back in 2004, in the convention, Obama was in there talking, I was watching them setting up stuff. I've been, you know, that's in my own footage. You guys will like it better when I'm done. You'll be happy then, I'll make you all happy, okay? Oh, there he is! Check him out, man. That's why he has to shave his legs, right? See, you have to have an excuse, right? Right? Because I have to ride a motorcycle. Okay. Goodbye, motorcycle beanie. Yeah. That guy's not normal. That's something, right? Oh, that's, that's the, that's a fucking... Oh, hell yeah, he's gonna park over there. Got it, man. God, they fucking canceled it, damn, man. Fucking A, man. Ain't this fucking badass? Wait. See? Ain't that badass? Okay. Oh, it's so cool, it's like Cape Coral, Florida. Check that out. See? Some weird tropical acorns, gotta be this, that shrub that's doing it, right? Let me see, I'll get real close. That's an oak. Oh, no, it's that one. It's that tree right there. Those are cool. I gotta collect those. See, I'm parked right next to it, please. Oh, check it out. Yeah, is that cool or what? There we go. Here we go, this. Check this out. Shake it. I'm really fucking scared. I wonder... Now, that's the thing. Yes, they're doing all these fake outs. Whoever's in on it, they'll be talking off in the side places, which haven't been around that much. Maybe just no one knows. And then there's so many people in on it. I know like half the staff, some of them know. Yeah. It's gotta be, man. It's kind of weird too. And the city manager... See, that, he's a weird one, he's gotta know, and then he got up out of his seat. When that one dude's gonna get like that arrest or whatever it is. Like... But it's weird. Because he's competent. Oh, God. There it is. Oh, we don't know what should be locked. No. Ooh. Got it again. Okay, gotcha. There we go. They censored this before. Um, I gotta get, I have to go through real quick. Or... I think I'm ready.
You gonna come through?
Yeah. I'm gonna be crazy. I'm gonna be fake, man. Figure out what this guy knows. See, you don't know. I know, you, you don't know, right? I think he should... Maybe you didn't know... That, that, it's all fake. Look at your footage, it's all fake. That la- last week. It's all set up. He doesn't know, look at the footage. Go look at it, look at it, you'll figure it out. You might not know though.
I'm not, I'm not sure what you're talking about.
That is fake. The rest of Wink News knows, you're Wink News, right?
Yes.
I was at the, um, at the Wizard Desmuree trial. They had Wink News, they let Wink News run the camera the whole time. It's all fake, you know all that stuff, how he has all his clothes and stuff? Like his lawyer. Um, they act like he's just, um, that, you know, all he cares about is clothes. That's all his lawyer would give him. His lawyer, his office, the lawyer's office, it got wiped out by the hurricane, so lawyer was right next door in the prosecutor's office with his new office, with all his clothes. And so he has like racks of clothes to break, and act like it's him. So dude, what happened with you?
I'm kicking him off.
So what's up, what happened?
Want us to tweak, get out of the doorway, sir.
Yeah.
If you want to stand out here, you can. You can set it up.
What, what, what happened? What happened with you, man? Let me get you like this. What happened with you? What's up with you?
To allow me to have my civil rights.
Like what? So what was that dude, last week, you were like really flapping around and stuff?
Huh? Just to let you know, let's just back in the course of the law. I simply, the seat next to me was up there, the seat behind that with him, I felt that City Council had turned their back on us as people who use JCParks and have opinions.
That's right, that was the JCParks.
And so I turned my back on them. I did not say one word. I did not put my hands up to simply sack the ease.
Do you know about the RICO statute? You do one thing, federal crime, and you're getting for conspiracy for whatever these guys do. What?
The mayor comes around and they ask me to take my seat. I said I was in my seat, and I was fully in my seat, my knees were on the seat.
I don't doubt, I don't doubt that at all. We usually, and I know, you've come to him before, correct?
Huh?
You've come to him before, I know you don't cause any issues.
And, and then...
Probably seen us here all the time.
You both, you are on both the other.
He said, well, turn around and, and face us. And I turned around.
You probably seen him when I was closing.
I was facing the opposite direction. I said, I believe you turned your back on us, so I turned my back on them. At which point he then had the police, you know? And there, I was not part of it, I didn't punch, but I resisted.
I get you.
No, you didn't. Were, were there body cams on? Were the body cams on?
I don't know, but there were reporters there and so it's been on television.
Yeah, that...
But in any event, that's not the point.
Don't mind, don't mind him, I'll talk to, I'll talk to...
So I immediately, whenever I said anything, was there a response from the mayor? Had he turned around and just let me with my back to him? I would have stayed like that the whole beginning, nothing would have been said. Nobody else did it, I didn't urge anybody else to do it. I simply had had enough.
Hundred, hundred percent agree with you.
And I'm an educated man, okay? In New York, the police have turned their back on the mayor.
They don't, they don't particularly care for when an intelligent person confronts somebody.
That's, I understand. But bottom line is, I'm a taxpayer. And I have civil rights under the First Amendment of the Constitution, which is not only freedom of speech, but freedom to display...
Absolutely.
And protest.
Again, let me follow up with this, this rule that they're saying.
That's over there.
That's perfect. Somebody follow up with that. I appreciate it.
There we go. Hey, there she is. There we go. You're all here, man. Yeah. That is hilarious. Oh my God, that's so funny. Dude, I thought I was gonna have to be in there. I'm always out here. I should put these legs down, man, there's that creepy guy. Yeah, he used to be. In the old days. In the old days. Man. What? I do, if, yeah. Just do it like that. There we go, that's pretty good, right? Something like that, right? Maybe it could... I'm gonna sit there. I'm gonna get up there. Oh, yeah, Kelly. My boy. With to me, guy. Get my water in there. You guys sit here?
I'm gonna sit here until we hear what's going on. Judge, terms of my return?
Sir, if you can. Can you give a room for my right of attorney's protection versus making the review of the city court? Put simply, early CPOs put on life standards, delivered to a collection as the best recovery of somebody who is a terrorist or corrupt, and they can't have an opportunity to report their problems. So tonight, a lot of the...
Okay, dude. So who are you? I guess, oh my God, there. You're gonna judge me. Okay, here we go. Sorry, department. I guess. I don't wanna talk about it. I guess. There. Cora Cox. Hey. Saved a life. There we go. That's so funny you're still here. That's so funny. There we go, man. Let me get these guys. Everybody doesn't know, I don't know. There you go, that thing, so you're from New York? You're from New York?
Originally.
Yeah. I'm from Boston. How long you gotta stay here, yeah? Because dude, I'll tell you why, I'll tell you why, because I think it's all fake, okay? That's why, because that's what I'm thinking, I'm thinking that whole thing was just fake. I think you pretended, I think the mayor knew, you all had it all planned out. And I think you're with all the guys. And I've been watching this stuff a long time. And that's why, so I'm not mad at you, I'm just, no, you're, you're, you're... Actually, I like you, I need to film you, but that, see, I'm thinking like that, everyone else doesn't, you know what I mean? Well, what do you say about that? Doesn't that take you by surprise, you didn't get surprised? You know, it's a strange reaction, man. Isn't there supposed to be the... "Oh my God, what did you think?" or something? Isn't this supposed to be off the wall? Let me get this dude. So I got you now. Got you.
It's under counsel, I, I have a pull-up. When they're gonna get to it, are they gonna give you an answer right here? Because they're doing a bunch of awards and things.
What do you do?
I don't question anything.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
What I question is that I...
They're clapping for you in there, what are you doing out there? They're clapping for you.
The city manager, the mayor, nobody else. They moved last week. Or I guess one last week since it has happened. How this, how this reads is any person removed from counsel from the police department shall be banned from serving attendance until counsel permitted them to return by mutually removing at the next council. You see what I'm... That's what, that's how that works.
Dude, if I get removed, I'm gonna subpoena you. And those cops, they, everyone talks, once they're under oath. If you have any legal experience, everyone's gonna...
I don't mind. I respect you. But there are certain rights that can be exercised. And that's what you're right. I have every complaint as much as any other...
It is, if they push the envelope. And, you know, the next... What they're telling me is you can't go back there until they're motioned. By legally, what you do on the next step is, I don't know, I don't know what kind of ramifications we have to get the city involved, the city manager, the mayor, all that stuff.
Is there body cam footage? Is there body cam?
Would you please, where are we at conversation?
You don't care if there's body cam?
Where are we at conversation?
You don't, I need those every day. But yes, there is, if that's what you're...
There's body cam footage? He says there's body cam footage.
Yeah, I don't, I don't even know what they unresolved with last week, did they just, just actually leave?
After? Yes, I did resist, I don't deny that. I didn't draw any punches, but I was hard to remove. Once they got me out of the aisle, then I walked. Because my argument is not with the police.
And, and I'm not, I'm not here to do it for you.
No, my argument is not at all with the police.
So... So what happened, what happened to the old mayor? Like, there's nothing in the news about it. Did he actually, was that at his house, or did he get taken away in the ambulance? Was that at the hospital? Because it just went down the memory hall. There's nothing worse, there's nothing worse than a, than a dirty fireman, that's the dirtiest thing.
Come on, man.
There's nothing worse than a dirty fireman. It's disgusting, the people are disgusting.
If, if, if they don't, if they don't come back.
No, because part of it is, is about Jason Moore, and part of it is about what happened.
It sounds, it would sound very common. It would sound very common, like, I like that.
So...
Look at this, look at this. Look at that. There we go.
I don't think so, that's very unusual. You might have to wait a little longer, but that might be a little more in your...
Good.
We shall see. And, and I was not planning on turning my back to them today. Because, because number one, that would not be a problem. But I, I felt I did it last week, I made a point. There's no point...
You wouldn't be the first person to...
I mean, there's no point...
I'm the first person. I'm the first person ever, it's all fake.
If I got upset, I would have just gotten the bin Laden. Which obviously I can do it if I'm just...
Y'all pretending to be me, you're the first, I'm the first one.
So I just wanted to make sure that you have the speaker. And as I said, three quarters of it involves JCParks. And there are a couple sentences about what happened last Wednesday.
Be careful, dude, if you cross the line and you break any federal law, you're on the hook for the RICO statute for whatever these guys do. And you know that they're doing some stuff, okay? You can't, don't break anything, anything small.
Leave mine there.
The RICO statute, wait, you're advising him to like not mine? to like, not mine, he's not, you can't break anything, you can't break anything. That one, that one woman did.
Let's, uh, let's, let's see what happens.
When you're on the hook.
They will wait until after the public has had a chance to speak. And then they'll vote, probably vote him, thinking, okay, the next council meeting involving J.C. Park is not going to be for something. Because this is a vote about an expenditure to continue the redesign. Yeah, it's a vote about an expenditure of five hundred thousand dollars to continue that redesign. And that, when that's done, they'll have another person, a patient over at McCall, walking around, you know about them. And then they'll probably pension them. I live on, I live on Leach Park, which is right down, you know, on entrance to J.C. Park. I go to J.C. Park with my need to rescue grayhounds twice a day. And we know everybody in the morning, and almost everybody in the later, you know? But certainly everybody in the morning. It's like a giant coffee.
We need more people like you down there. Let me go in there. Get you a little bit more of a...
Okay, I appreciate your...
I'm trying. I wanna, I wanna, I wanna make you happy, and then still follow the rules and the guidelines.
Oh, that's right. See, you can't do me, because you can only focus on one person at a time.
I'm not dealing with him, I'm dealing with this gentleman.
I mean, you can't, you're not, not like a typical person. We'll talk to you about that later.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah. So what do you think about my, my theory? Do you think I'm like that it's like fake? That's kind of, that's interesting, right? No, that's not, that's whatever, that's if you're guilty or something. Like, if it's me and I'm crazy, because you would know all the way, you know? You gotta be like, "What?", or something, or like, you know? A little... You're, you're, you know, you're like Dan Shepard, that's what he does, he just kinda, he can't, he just rolls up, you know? I'm gonna shut this down, this is, it's over, man. These people. You ain't getting anything. You ain't coming down to Florida for this. Like, why are you in this? This is stupid. These people are horrible, and it's not just what you... They're doing something bad, there's something bad. There's something really bad. You guys. So, so like, um, are you here for the thing where that guy got thrown out last week? Anything to do with that?
No.
Okay.
We never know anything about that.
Oh, that's good, that's all fake. That guy? Watch Wink News carefully, watch it, you'll see. Yeah. A lot of stuff going on, and this needs to be like, people like you doing business. Actually, he probably knows, we can't use about it. Got my orange hair. I mean, nah. Guess she's not watching me before. You be careful around these people, they, they set people up, man. They ain't your friends, you can't, no, it ain't, it's all set up. Yeah, this is gonna be a fucking video, man. This is gonna be it, man, this is gonna be great video. I don't wanna just bug this guy. I don't know. You know, I started to, you know, when cops are all like, kinda red and stuff? I've been at this so long. Like, I think of them as more honest, the more honest cops. Like the beet red cop, like, you're a little red, you know what I mean? But, it, it, yeah, I know, and it, but there's a certain thing, and I used to think, oh god, that's the worst, but I've been at this for a while. And I have my, I have my new prejudices or whatever, you know?
You getting any hits, or what? How you doing?
I don't know, it's, 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 it's the, um, it's the, it's the bots, it's all, everything's YouTube rigged, I'm not sure who looks at it, but I know, I know, like, intelligence agency looks at it, FBI. Everything like that, because I did a lot of stuff at Boston, if you look at my, if you look at the YouTube. I mean, a cop killer, cop killer case, I had that one, right? Yeah, it was the other, his friends did it. And, um, it broke open up in Boston. And I think it's connected to all this other stuff. But, you know? But yeah, that's what it is. Yeah, I can't tell, I don't tell, I can't tell, I'm just long. There, see him? Boats and hoes, boats and hoes. Gotta get me some boats and hoes. If you have to stay out here. Change the lighting. I don't wanna go anywhere. It's kinda weird they're doing this too. I get all, all the body cam, like, if they have arrested me, I get all your body cam. For that, I wouldn't have to pay for it. I get it for free. I get everything. I get one today. All cameras up here, but if I just put that... See? Oh god. Yep. Oh god, that guy's so annoying. Oh my god! Oh man. Um, do I need to go through metal detector again?
No, you're fine.
Okay, great. No, I think... Nah, I'm kinda shy, actually. It's, it's true, man.
When you say, "Give it time and see how it goes", you're taking up my time. You say we're afraid of change, but I'm mostly afraid of the changing climate. This concrete development will act as a heat battery in the summer months, and you'll be wishing you had left the coastal plants and added ground cover instead of pavement. Please research the heat island effect in transpiration cooling plants. This is so far beyond shade that I don't have enough time to address all of my concerns. Please refer to the data provided, which includes a statement by FGCU ecology professor, Winn Everman, who thinks this key wall is not sustainable. If you consulted with ecologists, you would realize how big of an state this is. Do not approve this updated concept, or advise the concept to follow sustainable ecology practices, and consult ecologists and conservationists now, before they use us as an example in textbooks. Thank you.
Good afternoon, boy. You know, I apologize to you, I heard that, uh, there wasn't one person that donated the land. I get two stories, one was a holding company donating the land, the other was the Lee County donated the land, but I think there were stipulations for that, and I hope that you follow those to a T, I don't know what they are, and have time to research it. But I was talking to Gloria Tate, you know, she's against this, uh, been going the way it's going. And she walks it every morning. And I speak for all the wildlife, I don't speak for myself. And there are rabbits, there are squirrels by the dozens, there are, uh, possums. And all those trees hold, uh, shorebirds, like the beautiful leopards and the all the other shorebirds that it have along the lake, I mean, along the river. And these things have to be saved, and I'm thinking he can do this by not having those trees out where those, uh, beautiful birds roost, or disturbing the squirrels and the rabbits, why? Because I lived here for forty years. When I first moved here, there weren't any squirrels around my house, but I live about, about, uh, three-fourths of a mile from the golf course. And the golf course had squirrels, and those squirrels came out and were on my property. You know, the wildlife, uh, just resonates out through, through the, uh, the housing developments around it, and, and with what you're doing, you're gonna disturb that, and disturb all the examples that live there. This beautiful park, and I can only suggest to you that you change your stance, keep it as it is. For example, the, uh, the ban show, well, it was eighty degrees at eleven o'clock, who's gonna come out at seven or eight, when it's ninety degrees, to watch a van? Not me, it's too hot. Global warming is here, if you wanna do something, you make something indoors where we can come to your van. And this is, uh, what I feel, I feel for the animals, I do not want to, uh, make, make any mess, but the animals have a say too. And this, uh, this, this poll that was out, I'd like to know all the ramifications. It was never cleared out the breach, we did not have a chance to do the poll, thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Pam Floria, mayor and council, thank you so much for this opportunity. Um, there's an old cliche that says that it's God's throw, don't fix it, and I think that applies to J.C. Park. You know what, a lot of people my age, people who live in Florida, use that park, it's low-key, it's walking, it's all that. And in Luba, we, we have a hundred and seventy-five acres, just blocks away, that is begging, begging for something. That's the old country cook golf course. We have, I live around there, I live a block down there, we're having tons of young people move in with their children, that's a perfect fitness course, splash pad for walking trails, for biking, the kids now are writing up and out this year. They're not, if we could use that space and use our taxpayer money, it would, I think, add so much to the city. J.C. Park may not be for everybody, but you know what, people love it, it's there, let's keep it, and let's add an addition to our city, something that will improve it, something that will not if we use our taxpayer dollars in a new way. Um, I really just ask you to kinda help on this process, look at that old country cook golf course, and consider using that money that I just get. Thank you.
As a man and a woman, members, I would like to talk to you about research, before planning. I, when I was a child, my grandmother put this sign, and it said, "Plan", and it was a great, big old letter, uh, and and the letters got smaller and smaller as you changed the letter. And I think it's very important that you do a plan ahead, that you do your research before you make plans. It's very easy to find a developer to draw pretty pictures of a potential park. But before any designs are adopted or even drawn, responsible people do your research necessary. They find out whether or not their plans are even possible. I hope that you have consulted environmentalists about the number of endangered and threatened species of plants and animals in the park. I hope that you have consulted marine biologists about the impact of threats or dogs near those oyster beds. I hope that you will start talking to the core engineers and find out whether or not dogs are even possible in the area before you go ahead with bars and, and food trucks for all the people you think are gonna come by boat. I hope you have discussed with the fire department and emergency services how you're going to extract people from the park or the nearby conduits in case of an emergency when the park is full of people from concert. I hope you have asked the police department how many more hours and how many more personnel they're going to need once you put a bar in J.C. Park. I'm sorry to say that I don't think you have a record of researching before you act. You are now building a large complex right on Cape Coral Parkway at the same time that you're talking about how that Parkway is gonna have to be six-lane. Um, when I started out in the morning, I researched where I'm going. I researched how much it's gonna cost me today, and I researched how I'm gonna get home. Thank you. I need you to do that too. Thank you. Thank you.
I'm a former resident of Cape Coral. I've been living on the River New Zee up top for twenty-four years. I'm comfortable across from JCPark, now a pre-year resident of Beach Parkway. Above JCPark, it's a haven of serenity, great place to walk, pick up a penny, meet social gatherings, or just sit under the pines on the shoreline and admire the dunes. On Facebook there are events like plant shows, car shows, crab shows. It gets pretty congested in the park, and along twenty-eighth Place. We have to protect our street park population, folks park like rats. Although there is currently enough parking on the north fields of the park. In time, traffic gets stacked up on Beach Parkway. We have a choice to either stay home or get out of the neighborhood for the entirety of the winter or events. There was a band concert a few years back. It was gridlocked on Beach Parkway. Traffic was completely dysfunctional closer to the park engine. Those who live on Beach Parkway and the peninsula area don't need JCPark to be a bigger draw than it is already. We need to have it maintained properly. Sidewalks have tripper joints. Full-up parking near the shore needs repaving. Land stipping needs attention. The drinking pumps don't work. We urge you to provide additional shade trees, replacing our exterior pines only when due to attrition. Maintain the present riprap shoreline, which is heavily populated by native species that often came to shoreline. Riprap is an ideal shoreline, which has proven itself for many major storms. It withstands continual boat waste and does not vouch for it back to the channel, the way the seawall did. That channel is tricky enough as it is. We urge you to make improvements to the shelters. Adding more permanent shelters would be great. But do not add a permanent van shell or shell-packed shelters. The sales require dismantling in the event of a vortex of seventy-five mile an hour winds. The city has more important things to be doing at this time. Improvements to the bathrooms and the walkways would be welcome, as would foot friendly paving materials. Maintaining an empty bench would be welcome. Please keep the memorial benches in the little library, but do not destroy the neighborhood nests of this park. Do not add any kind of food service. Keep the park alcohol-free. Please delete the boat docks on the boats list. I've done, I seriously don't. The ACOA will allow it anyway. As a voter, I can tell you numerous reasons for this, but then I'm out.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to express my views. My name is Nicholas Treppa. Today, the City Council will vote on Resolution 288-23 to spend an additional five-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand dollars authorizing Pinoni Associates to begin design and engineering services on the updated concept of JCPark. City Council has solicited months of input from citizens that use the park. Other than a change in the parking, addition of shade trees, and barbecues, there's little meaningful alteration. I am here to encourage City Council members to reverse direction and truly contemplate, after all the community input, what you think is the best use of this neighborhood park before voting. You are on a course to spend over ten million dollars to provide a transport park that the public overwhelmingly rejects. I overheard a news reporter in the park remark that she had not interviewed one person in favor of the proposed park changes. I believe the City Council members, in good faith, set out to do their duty of improving the park system of Cape Coral. They do, however, appear to have ignored the strong and vocal opposition to Pinoni's plan and are set on proceeding with an unwanted plan. Is it because, as one council member has stated, you will love it in five years? Or is it because you have spent so much money already, you feel you must proceed or be perceived as foolish? Those of us who use our neighborhood park don't want food trucks, boats, lifts, a van shell, splash pad, or alcohol in the park. Mr. Mayor, you stated at a previous meeting that you, you just can't consider the people of southeast Cape Coral who use the park, but you have to consider the two-hundred-thousand other residents who haven't opposed or supported the park. Don't you think these people would care more about the needless ten million dollar indebtedness than a park that they have accrued? I urge the council to have the courage and foresight to step back and start over. This time, first decide with the committee what is wanted and needed, and then pay the experts to make it happen. Thank you.
My name is Marie Kavanaugh. After coming here the last few months regarding the JCPark debacle, I have come to the conclusion that we do not have a representative city government. Instead, we have a council that ignores citizens' wishes and thinks they know what is best for Cape Coral just because they were elected. We did not elect you to recklessly, recklessly spend millions of dollars of our money on this park design. We do not like or want, especially since we just gave you sixty-million-dollar package in the last election specifically of fixed parks that were neglected for years and open new parks in Cape Coral. Apparently, you think, apparently you don't think we care. You are ripping money out of our pockets for a project we think is wrong for the case. At the ProCola event, I was told by one of the city employees that you have already spent over a million dollars for the time to accompany a base in Philadelphia, who apparently opened an office here in Cape Coral in twenty-twenty-two in what I believe is an attempt to make citizens think you hired a local company. You're playing games. It's obvious the design was not designed by anybody who lives in South Florida. There would, there would have been no shade sales if, number one, they'll fade within six months, and, number two, blow off and frequent high winds. What I brought this up at the last meeting, a city employee ridiculously stated you would go and take them down in the event of high winds. Seriously? You've tried to rationalize, but the citizens want it based on the most ridiculous online survey I ever saw. A survey designed with choices of, do you like this or that, and a box to check. Nowhere in this survey, that isn't a survey, did it give participants the choice to reject the entire project, nor did you design a mechanism to prevent people from taking it multiple times. I know. I did it. So how you gleaned to try to convince the people that people want it was seriously flawed and intentionally designed to do so, in my opinion. You are gonna approve this in spite of those of us who object, but are too cowardly to tell us to our faces for fear of the reaction you'll get. Instead, you waste our time. We're only here to voice our objections, and they should matter. With this council, it does not. Grow a spine and just admit that you couldn't care less what we want and simply tell us to sit down and shut up.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Janet Duff, and I have lived in Cape Coral for thirty-five years. I am totally against what the city wants to do to JCPark. The commercial development of what you are proposing should remain in the commercialized areas of the city and not dump it in a densely populated, beautiful residential neighborhood. According to the city's website, JCPark is one of Cape Coral's most popular park destinations. It was one of the highest-running parks in the city's Parks Master Plan of two thousand and sixteen. According to the city and Cape Coral records and the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, JCPark is a neighborhood park. A neighborhood park is a park that serves the population of a neighborhood and is generally accessible by bicycle or pedestrian walk. A community park is a park located near major roadways and designed to serve the needs of more than one neighborhood. A community park should contain a variety of active recreational uses such as community centers, ballfields, et cetera. I'm not so far by the yacht club and Lake Kennedy. In the Go-Bon project, you are using sixty million dollars to build seven neighborhood parks and three community parks. Your plan for JCPark is better suited for one of your community parks, not the destruction of our neighborhood park. Also, I think it is hypocritical and financially irresponsible here to spend sixty million dollars in building and repairing as green spaces with the Go-Bons, and yet you need to borrow another twelve million or more to destroy and remake JCPark, the most popular green space in Cape. JCPark is not listed as leading in the city's Go-Bon plan, and I have to clarify. Of the thirteen Go-Bon projects listed on your website, only four are completed, and most are under construction or awaiting permits. We don't want our park ripped up and unused for years while you await the permitting. Have you checked with the Army Corps of Engineers to see if your plan is even possible? Has an environmental impact game been completed? Please do your due diligence and see if your vision is even possible before you remove within one existing trade or spend another million dollars on design. We have over one thousand people on the Save JCPark Facebook page and five thousand signatures on a petition against these changes. The city should do a valid survey about what citizens want. Your proposed improvements, your, uh, previous survey by going on proposed improvements, by choosing which bistro or splash pad one, you're not really surveying the true wishes of residents about JCPark. Please vote no on Resolution 288-23. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor. I'm some people, friends of JCPark, I love you. I wanted you to take a, uh, sit back and, uh, pick it up and say something to people. They don't pay a lot of dollars, they do the research. Somebody secretly being a citizen state for maybe forty years. I've been here for almost, uh, representing the Palm Walk in the running, in the running area. People, citizens, they live here, and, uh, people that live on beach. I've gone to the beach three more times a week, and, uh, see them early in the morning, coming out of their house. They did the morning exercise at seven forty, and they, fifty, a hundred percent, about fifty-five o'clock.
I just, I, 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 my speech is, it's too late. I'm sorry. I wasn't on time. I, I, you know, I didn't change anything.
Right.
You're right. Well, that is.
I'm a politician. You're gonna sit back, be a citizen. I am watching out on the waters this Sunday night. I'm sitting on chairs, I'm here, morning, I'm drinking some water. I'm sure you're getting a personal reading. You just look at them, you're in the sixty feet there. You're listening, you're trying to speak. You have two hands, you're doing your job. And then you're done. It's, uh, it's like, uh, we didn't even get to the, uh, the specifics. It's six minutes in. And on this thing, you.
What's up, fool?
It's not red.
Did it go red? Did it go red? Did it go red? Did you see? It went red, right? The metal detector, it went red for that day, right? You don't know?
Dude, it's not my job.
Does it ever go red for you?
No.
None? Yeah, me too. Me too. There's this guy.
Stone Hole, man.
Yeah, they're gonna wait till after all the speeches, 'cause they don't want me to talk.
He gave me the, the whole, uh, there to ask questions. He gave a, uh, some.
I, I perfectly understand what he's doing. He's gonna have, right now, it's a three-minute public session. And he's gonna wait till everybody goes, it goes for an hour, so you can have about twenty people, three minutes each. And then we'll wait till that sixty minutes is expired, which means now the public comment period is closed. They'll turn around and they'll probably be here, but now it's over. So it's a way of stifling.
Warrior, a hundred percent right.
It's a way of stifling my free speech. As a.
It's not always, you hit your other email and stuff, correct? That way, it makes it all right.
I don't.
But it.
That's kinda what I suggest.
Wait, you're not supposed to.
There are plenty of reporters here. That's why you, you come. I'm not, I was, I was.
Consider his three followers.
There's Fox News in there.
Yeah, with them, they'll be coming out too. I would suggest losing to them.
I worry, but the Fox News writer, I know very well. And she was here last, last, the last.
Yeah.
The, the good thing, or the best thing you could probably do is, like you said, you're probably a hundred percent right what they're doing. Email them so they can't.
No. I'll take my speech and I'll email it, but.
And what we can say is, I'm staying there. It gets to them. I know you're checked. But let me still, let me still work on the.
I appreciate it.
I keep getting them, on, on, on.
I, yeah, they'll wait till the sixty minutes, and then I'll say, okay, you can come back.
Hey, guy, man, go to those things, man. I haven't been on a boat since I came down here. I've been here for a whole year. I haven't gone on a boat. My dad used to take me out in a sailboat. He used to say, I love sailboats. I used to think of it as work. See, taking me out when there's no wind. Because nobody else would go, you know, so I'd be out there. I have to go on sailboat races with no wind, out on a lake. And everyone's all serious about it. It takes hours.
You never, you never excel at this in the first place. And then, and then you break it out all of a sudden, and, uh, it's not real.
Yeah.
And, uh, and we're, and you have a, you have an exalt danger. You're asking us to pay the backfill for something we don't want. So basically, please stop.
Yeah.
And, uh, if, if you guys don't stop, it's, uh, it's, it's a bad, it's a bad, like, for you.
So, oh, oh, yeah, so what's the plan? They're gonna pull down all the trees? Looks like giant redwoods, and they're gonna chop them all down, right? You guys are gonna stop it? Is that what it is?
That's the research you have to do.
Well, like, I mean, I saw, like, looks like the giant trees all along the shore. They look like redwoods, but they're not native. They're the Asian, Asian.
They're Australian pine trees.
Yeah, and it's like redwoods. They're gonna chop all this down. Well, you know what I think? I don't even know.
I'd like to hear what they're saying, so.
There's boats going, oh, okay. Again, I get it. I just can't. Oh, dear. Maybe, okay, I was doing something. I can't do anything normally.
What is North Street Council doing to North County?
It's weird, man.
The city, the city council pretends to support our residents and we're getting stuck in that. But we're more than.
Yeah.
And we can tell them what we want.
Yeah, I'm seeing. Yeah, don't get too much light. We don't. Don't forsake me, oh my darling. Oh, it's all better than day. Dinner first, yeah, she's. The noonday dream, dream, dream. If I'm a man, I must be brave. And I must face that deadly killer. Or lie a coward. A craving coward. Or lie a coward in my grave. Thought it's easy to be my life for his and he did keep afraid of death or death. What would I do if you leave me? Do not forsake me, oh my darling. If I'm a man, I must be brave. And I must face that deadly killer. Or lie a coward. Wait a minute. That's weird, man. Oh, I don't understand how that works, um. I didn't, like, there's a, there's a green thing that turns red over, on that side, but you don't have anything on this side. And the sound's turned off, so how can you tell?
Sound's turned off?
Well, I didn't hear anything. Okay, okay. All right, that's me. Yeah. Yeah. See, did you hear that? Dude, okay, I just made a huge mistake. I don't like, I do make mistakes, you know? No, I'm not gonna do it, I was just, I was just wanting to ask you something. Not too happy. Let me just come here and then. And do, no, I'm spaced out. This is very stuff doing.
Good evening, I'm Trish Moner. In nineteen seventy-six, Seattle Kingdom was completed. It was sometimes hailed as the eighth wonder dome because the dome construction, as designed, was considered an almost impossible engineering feat. A mere twenty-four years later, in two thousand, it was demolished. A lack of funding for property and an accelerated absence of funds to do with the multi-million dollar facility. In another day, some years ago, my family hosted an exchange student from Germany. Given the history of our home, we totally have a house that's almost twenty years old, and we have lived there about seven years. Almost she herself, he described his home back in Germany as several centuries old, and his family had already provided for new generations. How did these two circumstances relate? Both show how distorted our society's concepts of prime value are. How can we not appreciate J.C. Park as it was originally conceived and maintained according to the valuable promise to which it was essentially gifted as a neighborhood park? I don't see any climate change as the mayor and the council chose. I don't see any crowds making loud chants.
Do you need me to go through the detector again? Who else?
Many years ago, there was a road being eaten, which the local authorities gained immediately by removing. The thoroughfares were lined with beautiful mature shade trees that would need to be removed to make room for a wider road. But instead of immediately cutting them down and proceeding with construction, new trees were planted back along where the new right-of-way was located. About five years or so, maybe ten, the trees were the size of the existing ones. It was then that the existing trees were taken out, and the road was widened without having sacrificed the beauty of the street scape as it was before. Mayor, Council, this was not changed, this was planned.
Hello, Steve Westmore. It's on southeast, I think they're new on the Pentagon Canal there, so the regular park, two blocks down. I have three grandchildren that grew up in that park. They're all adults now, they're all out in the world, they're all doing, I now have two great-grandchildren who currently play in that park, park when they come to visit. It is a family park, it's for family and children. An entertainment district is for adults. Entertainment district, you have music, you have dancing, you have alcohol. Supper, we have Forty-seventh Street, Seventh Street, not that far away. As a matter of fact, when you have the motorcycle events down there, way down there by the park, we can hear it. Uh, so it's pretty loud, you know, so you know what's gonna happen down there adventure. Something was said at the S meeting near the end, and remark was, why are we rushing this, why don't we put it off to the end? I say it was the mayor who said that, that's what he said, it was on the record, so it's not big deal. Uh, and I agree, that park, that park needs a lot of spit and polish. There's no reason, the parts and recreation park can't be given a little extra money and get down there and do a good field day on the property. I mean, it's, it's a beautiful place, it's meant for what it is, a park for children and families. The news coverage that I saw regarding the park, and I don't run in my way to watch this much anymore, but the news coverage that I did see, never mention the bandstand, never mention the alcohol, never mention the food trucks. It just dealt with trees and pretty walkways and things like that, so it seems like there's been some misrepresentation of what is gonna happen if this plan goes through, as it is. Cape Coral has a lot of undeveloped land, and in time, parks will be needed here. And if you develop something like you want to do in an area that has the need for a park, those people will come to that market. They will build there, they will buy there, the values will adjust accordingly. In our area, it's gonna decrease our values, I tell you that right now, right up at that, it's, people are gonna see traffic and everything else to decrease the values of the property, which again needs the deterioration of the properties. The white elephant in the room is the mayor.
Hello, my name is Senator Sarah Seveno Seven, South West Florida. As I mentioned multiple times, we cannot discuss issues brought up in council, ultimately compromised. If you can't discuss on your own time, why aren't the legitimate concerns brought up by residents being talked about while you are here? Now, one of you have addressed a multiple ecological and logistic issue brought to account through pension by residents. How many of you have researched how these changes are gonna affect the future ecology of the park? How many of you have reached out to ecologists or conservationists on your own time to see what the professional opinions are? How many of you have looked into the pros and cons of removing mangroves and putting in seawalls? How many of you have researched the effects of caving over soil and plant cover with concrete and how it affects temperature? How many of you have looked into whether or not the infrastructure of the area can support the traffic? Because if you have, I'm sure all of us would like to know. You say you like these plans so that arbitrarily justifies the devastating irreversible changes to our city's ecology. What you like doesn't matter in ten years after we're underwater because you went forward with plans without doing a proper environmental impact study. The direct coastline of the park is compromised of over eighty percent native plants, which is where you plan on putting a vote up. I wanna make it clear that I am not in favor of keeping the Australian pines, but to guide their removal as a conservation effort while destroying the native coastline and turning the park into a commercial venture is manipulation. Nobody is against change. They are against willingly jeopardizing their well-being and that of the environment around them for the sake of expansion. Change is welcome, but the grave for the greater good, and this development serves no such thing. Nobody has asked about whether or not the pavilions will be big enough. We want to know what your plans are for when a hurricane comes and you remove the mangroves that keep the shoreline from eroding. You are all ignoring the citizens you're supposed to serve, especially the city manager, who has sat in and heard all of our cleats and has had the opportunity to talk to you all individually and has yet to raise any concern of his own on this project and recommend that you vote yes. I realize there's no change in what's going to be done today, but you all need to know that you're being willfully ignorant and you are a threat to the longevity of Cape Coral as a whole if you approve this project. It is your responsibility to research what you are approving, and you have not. It is now your responsibility to hold off until you do. Do the right thing. I'm going to work now because I'm late, but I would really like to hear that you guys made the right decisions afterwards. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak for a citizen's example? I just have one. You know, folks, you're living in Jason, my name is Sid Peterson, two seven oh eight Southwest, second half. Um, the people that are all in Jason, like I haven't heard anyone mention about the proposal of a band shelter and festival level. Do we have a existing festival level in the ordinances, city ordinances? I have one person's feedback. Man, the board, so maybe you'll give me an answer to that.
This isn't a discussion.
Oh, it isn't, I'm sorry, but that, that's really I wanted to remember, because I think everybody else just based on everything that needs to be said, so, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak for a citizen's example? Is the analysis of this vote is now closed? Any council decision on this? Counselor McCollum.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I think all of you guys are coming out, and I've been listening to each and every one of you and reading all your emails, and I really do understand. Someone had asked what our motivation is. When I was listening to the plans and talking, I talked to the city manager, Mike Ilchism, wanting to know a little bit more about our invasive pine trees. And he explained it to me. And I also heard that we spent money to clean up the seeds that the invasive pine trees put up throughout the city. And I said, can you tell me how much that costs us to pay? Because it is a state law that we have to clean it up. Well, I received the numbers, and over the last ten years, it's been almost six million dollars, almost seven million dollars, to clean it up. So I said, okay, why hasn't this been thought up before? So we talked a little more, and then he shared with me that Santa Bough, back in two thousand and five, they had, after our hurricane hit, that was their time, they cleaned up all their invasive pine trees. It was a state law. So that is one of the reasons why I was more open to move forward, let's upgrade the park, make it look better, and save money since we were spending all this money to clean up the seeds. So I wasn't in favor to go against citizens, students, citizens that would be like, I understand, I'm not for the alcohol. I, I, I've problems with you guys, a lot of stuff. But I am with removing the invasive pine trees, because it doesn't make any sense, or we can replace them that will not cost us money, keep rolling every year on the year, then I am for that. It's needed because it's a law, it's not a control law, it's a state law. So we're looking at, what was it, six million, five hundred sixty-five thousand, four hundred and two dollars. To me, it's a lot of money. Um, so that we can develop in the future. So I just wanna let you know that. Thank you.
Counselor Shepherd. Yes, I wanna answer some of the questions, and I think I did in the past, but some of you think I didn't. What was the motivation? The motivation was, a lot of people, before I was elected, I didn't care that I was elected, first week, I didn't, they said we need more places that are alone in order for us to go to, for our families. And that their complaint was that the yacht boat, a lot of times when they bring their families there, it's overcrowded, they're parked, and they can't even get out of it. And that's what we've done, we're doing patient behavior. Along with that, when, when council decided to redesign the yacht boat so that more people can appreciate it, we had a large crowd of people come that lived around the yacht boat and said, don't touch the yacht boat and don't change it and don't do anything, just like you guys are now. And when I asked, the majority of you at the last meeting, if you were for the changes in the yacht boat, a lot of you raised your hand, you're for the changes, it's not your neighborhood. I can tell you, I have a park that's right behind my house. And I was happy with the way it was, just like you're happy with your park. And there was changes, and which we've done, and park lots full of cars, and majority of the cars are not from my neighborhood. My point is, we have a chair. Our city is growing, and the needs are growing, and it's the responsibility of this council to say the type of needs for the city. So we have to create places so that all of our citizens can enjoy the work, and that's what we're trying to do. We're not trying to hurt the park, we're gonna do everything we can to make it, to design it, that everybody can appreciate. Someone brought up the old dockers. I can tell you, being someone that gave these council meetings for a minute or two, councils before this council, and probably councils after this council, all feel the same way about the city opting into the old dockers. Unfortunately, the city is not able to opt here, but trust me, that is on all our minds. And a lot of the plans are updated from that park to create more green spaces for us. When the question reached down, I think our, our council and our past councils have did a great job trying to protect the policy in lane for all our citizens. In my neighborhood, there's a government developer came and said, we're going to build Cape Harbor. It's ruined school. People sit out on one Cape Harbor, you're going to take down mangroves, you're going to concrete up our neighborhood, or not going to see the sun rising, or the sun rises, so to be loud music. Cape Harbor got built, everybody in my neighborhood loves it, they appreciate it. They all go dockyards, they all go there all the time. And the past councils did their job, yes, they did. They made regulation for sound. They made regulation for when the, the sound goes off. You don't have, you don't have fans about music there for a certain time. And that was because of listening to the public. The same thing happened with the outflow that, when we, uh, the same thing happened with the outflow that, in the, uh, it's all, uh, it's something I don't know. And they have, they have, you know, it's, it's, it's there to go. And so, it's all there at a certain time. And there's all the, 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 the public's following us.
I still believe in him. I get this guy somewhere. I guess, uh, I guess I get that guy now.
I mean, I mean, I answered a lot of the questions that, that were asked. And I would have been, uh, on your, on your, uh, I mean, a lot of people, they've come many times. Another one of her call, when he asked to speak with me, um, at my office, and called staff, and said, I would like to talk with councilmen about his thoughts on the park. Um, we're all available to meetings like that, so that you can sit down one-on-one and discuss your, you know, your thoughts. And you will learn a lot, a lot more. And that's fair enough, so everybody, so, uh, everybody over everything. And that's all I can, I think, to bring you up, but that's, I mean, I'm out, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Shepherd.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I too want to thank the governor, chairman, your, your boss, your assistants. Um, we have some already thoughts on a minute, but we have, uh, so, so, thank you for going into it. Uh, I want to make sure to further activate our water. We, uh, we consider ourselves a waterfront order. Um, and so we need to be that waterfront order for, as many of our citizens as we possibly can be. Um, and now that everyone wants to pour enough water, uh, so they have to put it on one place, and we know the fact. Uh, and now, the joint, the, the, we have, we have two hundred thousand people that all have different ways of life. Uh, and, and we have the current, the current levels in the facilities that we have available to us. Uh, we're saying this, uh, about the, she was saying, yes, I've, I've seen that once.
You should take some, uh, you should not watch out.
Oh. You guys done?
Yeah.
Okay.
You gotta figure out this guy. No, there's that guy.
Let's stop.
Oh, you didn't interview him. I gotta get this guy. Yeah, I'm gonna miss guy.
I think there's one more lady coming, I'm sorry.
I guess so.
Yeah, come on.
Sure.
We got room.
All right. One more round of BS, boy, I'm sorry. I mean, it contains space, I can say it. This is so frustrating. We come here time after time. We don't want this, we don't want them to burden us with, with more debt, and they're not missing any payments.
Are you guys coming back? Are you guys coming back, or is...
Uh, we should be, yeah.
Okay.
We'll start live here in a second, then we'll be back up there.
All right. See you later. I mean... Good for our guys. They're so cool. Oh wait, they're gonna do that. And so, wait, I'll just tell you now. I guess you guys have a good time. Man, my camera sucks. You got the good camera. I just don't wanna... Well, I got my, I used to get my camera stolen, 'cause I was up in Boston, so I got this, these things, anyone could steal it, and it's not worth anything.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, we used to do Methode O'Mile and stuff up there.
Yeah, this is actually a little older than some of the other cameras we have. We have some newer ones, just not every photographer has.
Yeah. Yeah, so it's my theory, well, I mean, it's my, I'm sure, but, you know, it's my, that that was a fake arrest. That, that thing? That, that guy that's sitting there, and the mayor's in on it.
Oh, Scott Kent?
That, whoever, the, the dude that got hauled out last week.
Oh.
Yeah, you probably don't know. Like, like, all the rest of Wink News knows, they know. And they set this stuff up, and if you look, um, just look through your footage, you guys will start, you know, getting your head, you know? It, um, the mayor, um, has done stuff before, like I said, he's gonna remove that un-woman that talks. And, um... There's some really bad stuff. They, they, that, they, they, they got the, um... Let me just take this up with this, you know? They got them, they got them, the council people, like, um, scared and intimidated. Yeah. You guys should figure out, just like you guys, once you get suspicion, this place is crazy, I'm telling you, like, um... Yeah. Like... It's on my YouTube, just look up Cape Coral City Council, you know? If it doesn't show up, just show, put it, set it by date.
Oh, okay.
What about Patty Cummings? What's happened with her? I'm the one that, you know? Like, that was all set up. And he had to be quiet about that. That was my YouTube, too. Put that up. I mean, I mean, I just spoke out, and then... It got shut down. Dude, I was at the Wizard, you know, they had the, they had the Wink News dude at the Wizard of Desmure, they let him run the court camera thing, so everything... Every, like, every little thing, when you look at the cops, all the mannerisms, all the stuff, that's this one, that one dude that's there, they're letting him run it. And it's just like a, a minstrel show. Like, everything about all his, um, all his, um, clothing, like, he's just this crazy black guy, all he carries are his clothes. And really, it's a lawyer, the lawyer has his office set up, in the prosecutor's office, 'cause his got blown away in the hurricane, flooded, so the lawyer has all these suit clothes. And so, that's all he does for the guy, brings all the racks of stuff, and I got him, caught him doing that, you know? And they, um, I tried to get in there, they, they just flat-out assaulted me right in front of everyone. And that's a case, that, that cop's a hero. If, 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 you know, if Wizard is guilty, like, that, that, 'cause he didn't shoot, that Wizard, um, is a former boxer, and he's accused of being that, like, grabbed thing, so it would've been grabbed, flop, right? And then, you know, and that's like, and that cop wasn't, you know, and he tried it a little bit first, they say, and the cop didn't shoot him, and then, like, and that cop should be famous, you know? And, I don't know, it didn't go down, I don't know if they released a body cam yet, I don't, I mean, to the public. And everything's just Wink News, it's all like, you know, what they, they put in his stuff. So that's that. I've been assaulted twice in front of Wink News. You know, they don't do anything about it, those guys. At least, they just drag me out. All right, you guys go ahead, let me get out of here. I'd said Fink News, didn't you? I'm going, oh, crazy. These guys are so cool. See? Yeah, 'cause I wanna see that guy, that guy, that guy. Look at this stuff, man. Nothing, man. We'll just give a second to get up, or what, man? Yeah, they're holding the tour. I'm fucking happy, man. He's fucking a dog, man. Who knew? Take a look.
We got it, and we understand that, you know, your client got it, there were attacks in from the bank and everything, so there's only certain people that will be willing to kind of, you know, take care of whatever.
Well, thank you.
All right, excellent.
Will you ever be able to get the good points?
Okay, sounds good. Good talking, thanks.
Who, who, who?
What's the, what's the, the murder weapon, three, three? The rules, kind of, where do you find, seven to five, thirty-one? Well. All right, for you, is that what it is? I got, I got, I know, which team, too far, right? Yeah, I know, it's one of your work, right? Well, I mean, I'm still... You good, bud?
Yeah. Let me do this. Waiting still, so I gotta wait. Usually, just be out of here already. I'm gonna stick here this long, all this guy. I just gotta do that. Where is this guy? Poor guy. He's got lotion, he's coming, man. Usually, they have a break. Oh, yeah, one over there. Hmm, they used to listen into the, um, thing, 'cause they're, they're doing other ordinances. Usually, they take a break by now. Usually, they have a break, yeah. Morning. Really, yes, sir. He's just underthinking what he's... There you go, I have his chair.
I don't know how long this is gonna go, whether it's an hour, two hours, three hours, if it happens. Sounds like, I don't know, they're pushing, at least, on the way to the end. Or, well, we're sitting here for like, four, or just probably a year, let's say. What, what was your final vote, your final wish, your final, final, if you don't wanna wait around? You don't wanna wait around three hours, you wanna, gonna stay on the table. That would be, no wait on record, you have to respond back to it. There, you can have that, but there, even... Did we take our cable, I forgot, saying, and, and that, cable, that's how, that's how.
Did they cancel? They canceled the press conference, right? They canceled it? Did they, like, cancel the press conference? I think they did, 'cause I'm here. I'm gonna go down the stairs, I won't be in the elevator with you. I'll try to catch you, I'll see if I can, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna bug you in the elevator, I'm gonna try to run down the stairs. They canceled the press conference, right?
Uh, they might have.
All right, maybe you can escape. See, I didn't wanna go in the elevator with that guy, I'm trying to be nice. Ah, I don't wanna fall down the stairs, oh, yeah. It's easy to do, too, if you sound... I got these new glasses, maybe, you know, it's this close.
We want bulk, storage areas, we need, you know?
Right.
You know, the thing is, you give all the old time, you know, I mean, I don't, I don't...
Hey, cancel that.
We represent all the paintings that, I mean, the San Juan, you know, and, uh, and that's what we're, we're here for. There was some old bits, I'm like, I can't find them, and, and we're just like, that one lady that said, I'm here, but I'm running late, so I went down, I have to leave, so she ended up, uh, and, uh, she contributed, as you say, these are, a lot of, a lot of people, and research, everything, and, um, they have a lot of contributions.
Yeah, man.
Yeah, it was like seven, I think, six, seven, eight voters, I think. I know you voted in St. Park. Mom's a word.
But, yeah, so we're, I was gonna interview you, but I would ask the info along about Sunday, and just texting, uh...
I got that guy touching his nose, didn't I? I was just, I was just, just trying to ask him if he touched his nose.
Don't be funny, I think, on Sunday, if you wanna give it a review, you, or, I'm gonna take a look, I wanna sit down for like, uh, maybe, for the, 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 uh, meeting, that, I'll see how long it takes, and actually, if you can, if you can get in there, and sit down, and, uh... Yeah, so, baby, thanks for, um, listening, to everybody, and, uh, everybody showing up, and take care.
You as well. All right, I'm sorry about that. Um, we can do it, too, if you're still on. So, um, you're standing here, if I'd like to...
Dude, I got him, didn't I? I'll have to see, I'll have to look later. So now, now you know. Now you know. If you get there, you'll see, it'll be so awkward.
Hello, are you with, with us on JC Two, or what?
I'm, I have a YouTube channel, so I'm on this, and, see, I got this theory that, um, that, that arrest, that wasn't, that was fake. Like, like, he set it up with, um, and that's what I'm thinking, and so I've been asking about that, and you guys can humor me if I'm just wrong, I'm crazy, right? Wait.
I, to be perfectly honest, and this is no personal thing, you, or anybody else is there.
Wow.
I sat there and listened through it, or, I didn't hear, and my civil rights were violated.
It was, it was.
And not one fucking person, excuse my French, stood up. That's it.
I, I apologize, but I, I wasn't...
Not one. It was all, "Oh, please, don't change the park, God, trees are so..." Why are you saying that? Why is that today any different than a week ago, or at the council meeting before that? How many times do I say the same thing, in different words?
That's why, I said, I don't wanna rehash anything, but, and listen to these people.
To listen, to see me taken out, and have my civil rights violated. I wasn't doing anything, I was perfectly seated, I was sitting straight forward, and they have me removed, and nobody says a fucking thing.
I'll tell you what, I'm gonna have a, I, that, that one councilman, he says, "Hey, our door's open, I'm gonna make an appointment, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring it up."
Wow. You have a nice night.
Scott, the same touch, okay? For maybe, not just for that, but for other things.
So what, what's up with that, you know? Like I said, I think it's fake, isn't that funny, though, or something?
He felt that, you know, a, a lot of us weren't even aware that he were here, and he felt that we should've made a stand for, uh...
But, but, like, my theory that it's, like, fake, like, he's, he, he's, like, lying, and the mayor is in on it, like, and they set this up. Like, that whole, like, him getting escorted out by the police is, like, fake. The mayor's in on it, the guy, the dude is in on it. You see him flapping around and stuff, like, how it is.
I really don't know that, you know? All I know is that, that was here, I, I didn't even know him at that time, and I, I kind of witnessed it, but, um...
That's a strange reaction, dude, you guys...
You know, a lot of us don't even know each other, we're just meeting here for the first time.
Wow, yeah, you got that.
So, this is why, we called, we're having a meeting on, on Sunday, at nine AM. If you wanna come and, you know, join us, you'll bring a lunch...
Dude, I was up in Boston watching Secret Service, dude, it was back in two thousand and four, in the convention, Obama's in there talking, I was watching them setting up stuff. I've been, you know, that's in my own footage, I know what's going on, you know? It's funny, I wanna, I wanna, I wanna clear this stuff out, you know, like, this ain't, this ain't right.
Well, we're gonna have an open forum, everybody's gonna have a chance to, uh, you know, voice their opinion, and just come up with more ideas.
Four of the council members are blackmailing, okay? Blackmailing, they're scared. Look at, look at the videos, you see them.
See, I don't know all the inner workings, I, yeah, I just...
Well, that lady, one of those ladies that's with you is doing vicious, vicious up there with, with, uh, saying stuff. You might, you probably don't know, like, it's, like, how it gets dirty. You know, it's dirty.
Well, that's, that's my take on it, I'm gonna head out, and, uh, you have a good day, I gotta get home.
All right. You guys will like it better when I'm done, you'll be happy then, I'll make you all happy, okay? Oh, there he is, check him out, man. That's why he has to shave his legs, right? See, you have to have an excuse, right? Right? So I have to ride a motorcycle. Okay. To ride a motorcycle, yeah. Now it's so shifty. Shifty. It's looking a bit bad now. It's like, there's no Santa Claus. You guys saw that dude, just, just, like, a minute ago, when he was talking, when he did it, he touched his nose. I didn't even view the guy. He didn't, he didn't have... Everyone on this motorcycle. This poor guy, someone's gonna be... All right, they're gonna go home now. Are y'all going home?
Yeah, we are.
All right, you guys have a nice night.
Have a good night.
Wow, dude, right. Back in the day. All right. Dude, 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 dude. Back in the days, neighbors had, days, hey. Soon as pain, Skelly. Motherfuckers is all friendly. They eat, at the barbecue, always, yeah, now you turn your pages, to nineteen ninety-three. Neighbors getting smoked, gee, believe me. Talk slick, get your neck slick quick, cause real street neighbors ain't having that shit. Smoking up, projects, play all day, smoking, shooting dice all day. Neighbors, shit, doesn't make shit, there's a fighting shit. Motherfuckers, there's a fistfight, ways, motherfuckers, this ain't back in the days, but you don't hear me at all. But yeah, we did it. I don't wanna bug him like I'm following him, I have to go to my car, same way they went, I think. I'm, I'm done, I don't want to tease anyone, I feel like, see the police car, I'm parked on the other side, police car, over there in the corner. I guess it's it, man. What should I do? God, man. It's crazy, this stuff's crazy. That's crazy, man. Ooh. Man, there's no break, there's no recess. Uh, they're not gonna call a break, cause I'm here. Oh my god. Oh my god. Oh my god, that's what it is.
So, Mike.
Alright, you with me now, right?
I'm with you now?
Just me and you.
Well, and Rick.
God. So we did, they didn't call a recess.
Hey, so, besides, do you, anybody else, that you can think of? Friends? Yeah, Texas, right? Yeah, Texas, right? A woman? Thank you, mention.
Woman.
Why, 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 why? Come on. Oh, for the game? Yeah, I'd rather just work my game, you know? You know the caller, so I wait for response. Is she doing music? No, I work with her sister, she's like, she's. I don't think she gets on time. That's why I should have been doing.
Break.
What's that you got?
It is completely, it's clearly, we got a different timestamp. See, this makes a good time verification, right? Breaks that way. It doesn't fit, yeah. I guess I broke it all up. Break it up, broke it up, oh my god. Broke up the whole meeting. I guess I'll talk to you some other time, I guess. Hadn't talked to you for a while. You used to talk to me all the time.
I'm good, well, I'm trying to have a conversation with you.
Yeah. Yeah, I know, I know, so. Yeah.
I'll talk to you any time, buddy.
Alright. I guess, um, okay, so there's no, um, they didn't take a break, right?
No, they're breaking free today.
No.
Breaks.
They, they never do this, but they always take a break?
Not always.
If I go, if I go through the archives, what do you think it would be? Do you think I'll find, one out of ten times, they do this, don't take a break?
Your guess is good, Mike, man, you can take a wild guess.
Well, see, if I go through, and it's like, I got like, get a, they never do this, and I look at like twenty-five videos. Right? And then, so I'll think, okay, it's really rare, right? And then I'll think, yeah, it's cause I was here, right, the variable, but.
If you wanna think of it that way, you're the common denominator, huh?
Yeah, or the uncommon.
The uncommon.
The, the, yeah, something like that, yeah.
Have you been up back to Boston?
No, no. I miss the cold now, I like the.
Roll back over there.
I'm gonna try, I gotta try it sometime, you are?
Yeah.
You gonna be in Boston, or up in, um, near Lawrence, or?
Up near Lawrence.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, that's cool. My dad's, um, well, my family's all from Massachusetts, and then, on my dad's side, they went up to Maine, a couple hundred years ago, or whatever, so, but that's still, that was part of Massachusetts too, for a while. You know, and then, um, and my dad had to go to high school, his dad was a minister, unitarian minister. And, um, so he had to get taken out of his little like paradise little village, where were they, off Portland, um, um, uh, Pride's Corner in Portland. Uh, and, 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 yeah, and that little Westwood, or whatever like that, and toward that. So, he had to go to high school, down in North Andover, with all, all the Italians and stuff, and I think it was, World War One, World War Two had just ended. Yeah, like, like, like North Andover, you know, they made all the buttons, all the medals, everything, all buttons, all medals, all doodads like that, you know, so it's like.
Not many textile mills in North Andover.
Yeah, not, they did the buttons, so that's, that's more of a machined, you know, little things, they did all buttons for the whole army, for the whole, probably for Europe. Something like that, but, um, so he got taken. Yeah. Alright, I'll see you guys.
Alright, man, see you at the next meeting, alright?
Alright, you're gonna, you're gonna go up, you're gonna go up there soon, or something?
Where?
Uh, up to Massachusetts?
Yeah, yeah, a couple months.
Oh, that'd be great, it'd be like a trip for the winter, it'd be crazy.
It'd be a little winter wonderland.
Yeah. Yeah, that'd be fun.
Alright.
Great. I don't think he's supposed to be running, talking in his mouth, or something. Now that guy's, see? That guy's not normal. That's something, right? Oh, that's, that's the, that's a fucking, oh hell yeah, he's gonna park over there. Got it, man. Oh shit. That dude's is, um, he's the, um, he's the, um, what I calling for? Already skipped through it. Yeah, let's see. Oh, he got out quick, didn't he? Yep, that's the guy, cause that's where they park too. That's where they park. There we go. See? E N J G two zero. That's the guy. Definitely. See, I'm, I'm parked next to the police car over here. Fucking could tell, man, they don't, man, everyone down here, everyone has a naughty look on their face, down here. Everyone has a naughty look on their face. God, they fucking canceled it, didn't they? Fucking A, man. Ain't this fucking badass, wait. See? Ain't that badass? Okay. Oh, it's so cool, so, Cape Coral, Florida. No, you like, it's pretty, actually I should, it's hard to get to it. Right, it's so easy. Check. Maybe. I'm also upset about my civil rights violations of my rights, and, yeah. Hmm, I've got so many rights, I gotta.